Do the next.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Call me if you're ready. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Barron?
President.
Mr. Christensen.
President.
Mr. Frer.
I'm here.
Mr. Gobba.
I'm here.
Ms. Lopner.
Yeah, she texted me and she had some urgent come up, so she wasn't gonna make it.
She's not gonna make it.
Yeah, she asked to be excused.
Uh, Mr. Noonan.
Here.
Ms. Popa.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Here.
And Mr. Walter, who has some help.
Okay, any public comment?
Steve. My name is Steve Sire, I'm an Empire Township representative of the Long County Historic Preservation Society, or Empire Townships. And I wanted to thank several individuals on the county administration and staff for helping us put on an event on the 27th of May. We should build an County Historic Society Museum there with their newly acquired.
I can't hear you. I wonder if you could sit and speak, please? Is that on, that speaker?
Oh, they're on.
Where?
Okay, can you start from the top?
I don't know, pull it closer to you or whatever. You can't sit.
I'm Steve Sire, I'm an Empire Township representative of the Long County Historic Preservation Society, or Townships. I wanted to thank several individuals in the county administration and staff for helping us put on an event on the 27th of May. We think we had about 150 people in attendance. The County Historic Historical Society Museum have a newly acquired Model A that they brought down to Long County. And we had people from the Northwest Michigan Draft Horse and Yule Association there doing harnessing demonstration. And also some other things to show their draft horses. I passed out a picture. The older picture is from 1911 when the barn was newly built. And one of the things that I wanted to do during the day that everybody was there to take a picture to reenact the original photograph. And so that's a Grace Johnson photograph, and it turned out really good. I wanted to thank her all for cooperation in doing that event. Thanks.
The barn looks really nice.
It really does.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Well, for curious. Moving on, we've got Dan May here, who is here to talk about the potential ice skating rink that we spoke about last month. Dan, if you want to come up?
Yeah.
Have a seat.
I brought my computer and projector and just a couple pictures, just to look at.
Okay. Yeah. I don't know if we can get them on the com-- if you want to just bring them up on your computer and then maybe we can just look at them. Can I look?
Dan, for the record, is your last name spelled on the ID line?
Uh, Long Island asset.
Oh, May. Okay. And do you have an entity you're representing?
I do have. A citizen of Maple City.
Citizen of Maple City?
Yes. I talked, um, it was a good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here and the opportunity. As well as the case of gentlemen. And I've talked with folks and family in the area and got a good idea of what would be needed. Three main things needed would be flat surface, 150 feet by 75 feet, power, and water. So water to resurface. What I've worked on obtaining is all the right materials. We have some rink and an old rink liner that they used two years ago that they'd be willing to loan to us. And I've acquired two snow blowers, shovels, hoses, all the equipment needed. And then I have volunteers, five different people that are willing to help in the event. So we need no cost other than power from the water and lighting lights we can have. What Leyland did is the first year they did it on the cheap, they had the equipment donated, the liner donated to them. They did it all at a volunteer network. And then after that second year, they had a volunteer network of like 20 plus people. They had donations and they put all kinds of lights up, nice foam boards all over. I'll show you. I could show you.
You talking about what location?
I'm open. I did kind of look around in the area to the Miles Cammerly National, it's called the Fenskin area.
The 4H park or?
Hayfield.
Yes. So that's good and flat. It's plenty mega in size. I'm just not sure about it. I think I did see water there, but I don't know if there's power over there.
There's no water there.
On both sides? I'll have to check out. On the south side, I have two people who are well open. I have a chair and some advisor. Okay. There's power there. See that? Power's there. Look right there. That's where it's at. So that might be the first step is to see if it's.
I'll try.
Yeah, across the street. We have power and water.
Dan, we talked, well, we originally talked about it. You had, or you had said that people have had water hauled in. Is that a possibility or do you still need water to maintain it?
We need water to resurface it.
Okay.
At least nearby, if you had a tractor, 50 gallon drum on the back, you could resurface it.
You're gonna need to speak up. I'm getting warnings on my thing that the volume is too low.
At least, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be onsite, it's nearby. You can put a 50 gallon drum on the back of the tractor and resurface it. I look about a mile and two down.
Dan, I'm John Popa. I'm in favor of what you're doing. What if you just did it this year, you know, as a start? And you've talked about a generator and then you talked about maybe a tanker coming in and flooding it, especially if you got the thing going and you come back after the year and say, hey, it's working. Now what can we do to sustain this? Because I don't know, your volunteers might quit and then I don't, I've been in the power industry, but I didn't look there where the power is because you're going to be charged a full cost of construction to put in a temporary pole there because they don't make any money on it. And so those things are full cost and they run a few thousand bucks depending on where a transformer is and a pole. But do your project, this is just me thinking, do your thing and get the thing and get it flooded. And maybe that horse barn up the hill has a place to get water, you know, for a 55 gallon drum or work it out with the fire department or something. Get the thing going and say, hey, this is a success. We proved it. We flowed the snow and yada, yada, yada. And then because I put water someplace and then bring electricity in and then find out that it just didn't work out like we thought. I mean, just get the approval from us to do a rink for this winter or a rink or two or something and see how the parking works and see how the county plows it out or what happens, you know? You know what I'm thinking? You see, because it's not gonna hurt anything to lay the plastic down and.
No, that's my, I'm.
Try it out.
My opinion as well, but.
Yeah, try it out.
Is that in the 4H rink or the?
Arena.
The arena area? Is that where it is, inside the arena?
That's where it's being moved.
And you might want to move it, you know, next year.
And there's power there.
There is power.
But no water.
One other nice thing that would be at that location is there is some bleachers there and there's that little covered roofs if you gotta change your skates or what, you know, whatever.
Casey?
Yes, go ahead.
So again, what's our arrangement with 4H and the use of it? I mean, don't they have a use agreement with us to?
They do, but I don't know what it states and I don't know if they would use it at that time of year.
They do archery, don't they? Isn't that where they do their archery?
Yes. Right.
Okay, okay.
He's talking about like right inside the actual arena.
Okay.
And that doesn't really get used.
It's still things that we need to just talk to them. Okay.
Can I ask what the surface of the corral is now? Is it just gravel? What is it?
Hey. Sand. Sand.
Sand? Okay. I mean, so laying the plastic tarp down, it wouldn't hurt that type of surface?
Laurel first, sorry.
Well, the 4H might even be interested in setting up ice skating rinks.
That's true.
We need to talk to them.
It would be good to talk to them or mention it to them, but I don't see any interference because my son does the archery and that's over by the first of November. So I don't go for it. And that's like, it's on the outside.
Well, if there is power over there, this is for my childhood. We had a local rink at one of the parks in Detroit where I live. And nighttime skating was very popular. It was used more than during the day. So I would encourage you to make sure we get power and put some temporary lights up. And I think it'll be a wonderful thing for the community.
And we should be able to treat this similar to anybody using the park or something. It doesn't have to go to the board or anything because we're not.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, it's not anything, it's not a formal agreement. It's a use of the park.
It's a use of the park. We should just keep it simple maybe. I don't know if we would need a disclaimer or something. I don't know.
No, there's always liability issues.
Right. Usually there's a form when someone wants to hold an event. It's in there, a form and you got insurance or whatever. I don't know.
But this is just a park use.
Right. It's a park use and they're using it, but they are, you know, music quite involved, hopefully. And they can use electricity, but if someone runs into a pole or falls down and busts their head open, I don't know. I'm just saying, it doesn't have to go to the board.
Yeah, I don't think it does. I would prefer it not to.
Should we, we can prepare a motion or something after, and do it next month or do it now, I guess.
If this is kind of pre-publicized, we might be able to, or if the people that we donate to the lots, if there's a good interest in, we might have.
So there's water across the street?
You're around?
Is that, did you say that the well is?
It's only for emergency use.
Turned off if, you know, if there's a barn fire, it'll come over there and put a light on.
So it can be turned on periodically?
Well, then it'd have to be re-winterized after you use it. It's the same as our irrigation wells. We have an agreement with the fire department that in any emergency you turn it on, but it's their responsibility to re-winterize it. Fred lives right around the corner. He'll give you some water.
There you go.
How often do we have to turn the water on? A weekly thing?
On the average, I'd say twice a week.
How long?
Yeah.
You're not gonna re-winterize once or twice a week.
Can you get that thing, can there be a drip mode on that water so it doesn't freeze when it's on? Can there be a drip mode on that? You know how you trickle things, keep the pipe from freezing? Not gonna do that.
I think we're all pretty well in favor of this idea. Just gotta work it out, kind of a trial run. What, the one question I had about like plowing the lot so that you can have parking, is that something that you'd have arranged or?
I don't have a plan. Yes, that's something I'd have to, or the fire would be easy to have.
Okay. Because that's not, go ahead Laurel.
Is Paul's Green Road a road that the county has? It's centered on the planet.
Yes.
So who's that?
You get pretty big drifts there.
That's what I'm worried about. I mean, it's not anything that can't be addressed, but we might need to ask for a volunteer or something to help plow that out or see if we can get somebody to do it. Because Scott has a plow, but he's not over there all the time. I probably wouldn't be able to arrange to have him.
Yeah, once the county road gets the banks up, then getting through the bank and then the drifts that come after.
You'll find that out the first year of operation of what, you might have to have a nice friendly farmer with a snow blower on a tractor.
Long ways for me to go. Especially on salty roads.
But there are some just around the corner.
Yeah. Like I said, we might have to find a volunteer or somebody to help us with that. So we're mobile.
What is the frame around the ice, around flooding gonna look like?
So. So Laurel, we got a consensus to go ahead, then he just has to fill out a form, a disclaimer form when they have events? Is that a form that you have or something?
I've had experience two years now with. These would be four foot segments.
That's my way of looking at it because there's no organized team. There's no coach.
Specific brackets.
Like you said, or a family coming to play soccer for a birthday party or.
Just come, just come, yes.
Don't, I'm sure we have some sort of liability though related to that rink.
Well, we're gonna discuss MMRV's visit.
Okay, yeah. I would definitely think we have some liability issues.
Some type of, some type of.
Well, we are covered.
You're gonna be doing something.
It's like, it's like sledding at that same park.
Yes.
I mean, there might be a liability issue that if the third parties with.
We're covered.
Equipment essentially, the sliding, the plastic and whatnot is a third party stuff.
Brand name collabos, come on and bring them six. It can happen, be skating.
We aren't organizing the sledding, but if someone comes and sleds, it's okay. So if we're not organizing the skating.
We are, we are organizing the skating. By this discussion, we are organizing the skating.
It's worth an ask, I guess.
I, definitely.
It might entail some additional.
Right.
Totally.
Because think of all the villagers.
Absolutely, but I'm sure they've got some sort of.
This is Leyland's rink.
Oh, boy. That's pretty.
Wow. You help with that one, don't you, Dan?
I've skated on it, but I haven't helped.
I see.
I've done it on it for the last five years. It's 40 feet by 70.
Okay, yeah.
Can I see it?
You did 40 by 70.
Sweet.
Pretty cool. I like the idea.
Yeah, I like the idea.
I guess then for the minutes, we could just say we all are in consensus to go ahead and proceed and set up a skating.
Why wouldn't we have a motion though? I don't understand. I mean, this is pretty big. This is the biggest thing that we've discussed since I've been on this committee. Literally it is.
We can make it into a motion.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know your.
Well, we don't have details like how much it's gonna cost for the plant, you know, as far as planning the detail, what items we need to, it's just a concept at this point.
So do we need a motion that we approve of you going ahead and working on these and coming back to us at a certain date or?
Approve the concept of establishing this ice skating.
Laurel, did you say this will be a subject for the meeting on July 17th at the park?
We can mention it to the MMRV.
Okay. I mean, I'd like some kind of determination of the liability issues, especially when it's a third party's equipment and materials that are being used and by the general public. Because that would, that could be, you know, contributing a liability issue on our part, which we don't want to have.
I can make a motion that we approve Dan May to proceed with establishing an ice rink on the north side of Miles Cammerly Park.
I'd support the motion.
Keep going.
I would maybe switch out the word establish or pursue the idea or something, but yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
So you want to read back the motion?
Approve the concept of pursuing the idea of an ice skating rink on the north side of Miles Cammerly Park.
Sounds good to me. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. And Dan, if.
Appreciate it, Dan. That's a lot of work.
If you want to stay in touch with me and when we, if you want to, we can try and get ahold of Scott and look at the park someday. Just so we get an idea and then later this fall or early this fall, we can kind of get the whole plan together.
I did just email Rosalie Collier with the 4H to let her know that this is a discussion and, you know, that she should maybe be in on it at some point. Just, I like the idea of making it into a club activity or something too. I mean, that's, that's great.
If Mr. May is part of the GTB Financial Resources Department, you could probably go with a 2% grant. November. Would be one way of, we have, no, we have a plan and it's going to attract just about anybody to participate. They do like the things that affect more of the human interest sort of them. This might be a very good way.
Excellent idea.
So we could work with the Miles Cammerly Park Committee on a 2% allocation request that would be on the board of GM in November, which would be a little narrow finding if we were working to GM, at least that pops up.
I like it.
So the only cost I see in the county, I think I can arrange everything else, the equipment, the volunteers, but the electrical costs, I don't want to account for the cost. It's not gonna be very much.
Well, we could maybe pay attention to what the bill was previous to that and we'll just see if there's any, you know, like the size of the guys. That needs to be pretty cheap to run, right?
If it's, I mean, if it gets crazy, then it could be a problem, but as long as it's not that much, it could be our small donation to make it run.
Try it out one year, you know?
Yeah.
We don't know what it's gonna be. It's bunch of little light bulbs once in a while.
Yeah.
They're off at midnight. Right. And check the breakers and all that, what it's gonna be. I think it's a good idea to try and then, hey, it really works out and with the correct attention and the good articles, it's a good use of public land.
One good thing new in those is to kind of divide up the rink for people to have. Figure skaters, there's families out there and then they have hockey players on the other side. So everybody gets to.
Cool. I like the idea.
Cool.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the agenda. Approval of the minutes from May 3rd, 2023?
I'll move the approval. Popa will second up.
Any, is there any questions or comments on the minutes?
Very good minutes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Well, for curious. Moving on to the financials?
My financials were 14.2% of budget.
We're gonna spend the rest by the end of the year?
To you guys.
I hope so.
One thing I'm looking at here, Scott, the membership dues and fees is 646%. Is that, is there something that went up extraordinarily or?
I'm not sure exactly. We'll find out. It wasn't this month.
Casey?
Yes.
That just means that you only had a budget of $100 and something got forwarded on for that amount.
Okay.
Because the budget amount was only 100 and this was submitted, so you're gonna be an accident order.
Right.
And we're surprised that it says 646.8% when we had a budget of 100. So it shouldn't be quite that much.
Right.
Do we know what that 648 is?
That's what I couldn't.
That would be a good question for.
647.
I would imagine the grass isn't growing very fast.
HAM Outdoor, is that mowing?
No, it's cleanup of the whole surface.
Clean up all settlers?
So the irrigation on the soccer field, is it holding its own? Does the field look okay or?
There's some spots that need some.
Looks pretty good overall. I was just there last night though. There's a few brown spots, but, or small. At this point, they're small. If we don't get any rain for.
I've had it shut down a little bit. Overall, it looks good. Yeah.
Your travel too, listed is at 106%? What is the travel? You going back and forth?
That's our mileage coming to meetings and back.
So do we need to amend that or how?
So we're gonna have to bump that from budget plan. Well, yeah, it'll be amended at the end of the, well, we won't amend it, but you guys.
I figure there's about, the money in this budget that we, that the committee has some control over, or the commission has some control over, is about $157,000. And we have $146,000 left to that. That's what I said, we have control over, maybe repair and maintenance, contractual services, capital outlay and capital outlay under 5,000. So that's a lot of money. We should think about how to spend it. Maybe there's something in the pipeline I'm not familiar with. There's nothing at Miles Cammerly right now, but I know about the other two parks. That's a lot of money to spend if we don't have an idea before. That's a lot of money to spend if we don't have an idea before December comes really quick. We're not meeting in July.
That's right.
Just something to think about.
Yes, and this is, this is the struggle of this board is we have a budget, we have lots of projects we'd like to do, but it takes almost a year to get the project in line and, or more. And then sometimes you get projects done, sometimes you can't get everything in line, sometimes you get some momentum, then it dies out. So we do struggle.
I understand.
Struggle to get it spent sometimes. It's just.
Old Settlers has 10,000 in the budget for this year to do the grading and parking space assignments essentially, parking areas. And we expect to spend that money, we just got to get moving on the project.
So we're down to $136,000.
Each, yeah, each of the.
I'm sorry.
You don't have control over that much.
No, I understand that. I mean, that's the most we possibly could have.
You can't mention a UA potty as well. A universal access potty on the one side, that was also discussed.
It was discussed, but I don't know that it was actually in the budget.
Well, those numbers got disseminated, I don't have them in front of me.
We have an idea for two universal access enclosures, but with, Port Pies came, I'll talk about that in a minute on Scott May, but we can't probably plan where we're going to put those till we have our master, for the master plan developed, which is not, it's in the pipeline, it's not here yet.
I don't disagree with you, Don, it's just, somebody has to originate the project concepts.
I understand.
Be the leader for the, and they have to usually originate out of committee first and then go through the steps.
Yeah, each of the committees have their numbers and have their ideas, so keep meeting and, uh, let's go out to bids. I think John is doing some work at Veronica, so there are some balls in motion and.
Well, if we can be creative and think outside the box, maybe we can make sure we don't lose that money, because it's gone, it's gone.
Get one shot.
Okay, are there any other questions on the financials? Could you look back to see what that is?
I couldn't find it.
Okay.
I'll find out.
Yeah. Okay. Get a motion to approve the bills?
One was, nobody's seconding, I'll second.
Who was the first?
I didn't hear a motion.
I didn't have it.
So moved.
No, I moved the minutes, I didn't move the, the financials.
Move to approve the financials presented.
And then Don seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, everybody should have this handout. I, Mrs. DeDepp preparing a memo, just very short, to the point on why there's the place that administrative system. And I have to tell you, since this whole process of trying to find an administrator in handling COVID and ARCA money through last year, and the den of offices to move under the administrative umbrella, as well as Kanna and more, they can attest to the fact that the board has a lot on your plate right now. And we are spread exceptionally thin in the office. So I just, Mrs. Depp preparing a menu, memo, memo that gives you an overview of how this discussion occurred and it involved a separate idea by then Administrator Chat Janik, as well as John Pova, about how there was need for some oversight of this board to help you and guide you through the process of conducting meetings and moving your agenda items forward to the board formal approval. So the last paragraph, Deb has asked that we initiate discussion for options in providing administrative assistance and oversight to the press commission. Uh, aren't you sure after Darcy has a few ideas that she's going to bomb us all dead when she returns from her offsite meeting? But this is just to kind of give you an idea of this is coming down the line. We're not going to keep, we're not going to put you high and dry, but this does mean that.
Do we need to do anything?
Not now. But just kind of laying the groundwork, you know, that it's, it's got to happen. I've already stepped out from the coalition for the substance abuse and I'm not taking notes and I'm, I'm not helping set up meetings and other stuff and forwarding information to those 70 plus people that are on that board. There's just too much going on in administration right now. We've got a pageback project that we're working on, there's a mobile budget we're working on. There's just a lot going on.
Okay, go.
As a refresher, because some, some of the board members here weren't here, like Laurel said, I brought it up, whether it was 2021, I don't know. When I brought it up, we were looking for help also on the Parks and Rec, like to help, help Scott out and stuff. In the meantime, I think you hired Calhouna. Is that? I know, so when I proposed it here, I said, this county needs to hire somebody with boots on the ground. Now whether Parks and Rec used it half of the time and then Buildings and Ground used this, what we need to face the fact that we've got all this stuff up. And we got Laurel, she helps us then with that, but I thought, you guys got to face it, we need an employer. Yeah, we need someone so that when we pick up the phone, hey, do you think you could run down to Miles Kimerly and just see where that, instead of having Scott do it all? And you remember when I was discussing this? And that's when Chat said, yeah, we'll go and look. And they squeezed out Laurel to help us on writing these grants, but to, to write a grant, you know, she's sending us these emails, we don't have anybody to write. If you had, if we had an employee in this county and you would put that in the job descriptions, they can meet with the tribe, they can do this and half the stuff that you do and I'm going to go out and pound nails tomorrow around the pond, but, and that kind of stuff is okay. But we still have to face the fact that we need, we need another employee and.
At least.
At least, and to help the Parks and Rec out, but then also to help the Buildings and Grounds with the Parks and Rec out. We got a lot of parkland and we're not taking care of it. We got all these projects that, I don't know. I think the need is still there and with Laurel dropping off, that's going to be a big loss because she keeps this stuff up. End of my speech, but that's the history of it, of where, where, where it surfaced. And we did get Laurel here for a while, but they, they got a lot of other stuff that's cooking.
Great, I, I definitely appreciate Laurel and everybody that's been working so hard and I do want to let you know that the county administrator Deb Allen definitely has it on her radar to make a change. Whether we can get it through the budget, that'll be another thing, but a facilities manager or some sort of staffing that helps support the infrastructure that's huge in this county is definitely a discussion that we're having at the board level. So yeah, I guess we'll just be on our, all of us chipping in until we kind of get these all things worked out and, and just say appreciate, thank you for Laurel, for the work that you have stepped up and done for this group, I'm sure, and I know all the other groups that you're involved in, so thanks.
Yeah, I think there are two, kind of two issues. The facilities manager is the drum that John's been beating pretty heavily over the last few years. But Laurel's replacement as a direct assistant to the Parks and Rec Commission is a different position. It's a separate thing. There are two issues being talked about and what we're charged with doing is addressing Laurel's replacement. And, um, you know, I had a motion last, last go and I withdrew it, but, um, you know, we need a person and that person needs to be funded. The stipend came from somewhere.
That was the only way that I could be reimbursed for the additional work that I did for you was to, rather than a bump of, hey, it was research through council and the stipend was the most logical way to do that.
And that came out of the general fund.
Your stipend is not in your base and was that an issue? Is that the issue that came, the way the stipend came about?
I don't really deal too much with specifics with money like you, but I just want to know if I'm getting compensated. As far as how it goes, it's like, as long as I get the money, that's all.
But it didn't come out of our budget.
It did come out of.
It came out of Park's budget.
Yes, it did. Because they amended your budget to include a stipend for that position. So it's already in the budget.
So what is Deb looking for as far as our discussion? I mean.
She's just letting you know.
You're not going to be here.
I mean, she would have loved to have been here to be, but she had an offset.
Is she looking for affirmative action that directs her to, to continue to fill that role?
She just, she's letting you know that this is coming.
Okay.
And we're going to try and work to find someone to do it. There are, there is the opportunity to work with Laurel. I don't know how, I heard an idea from Darcy and I don't know if it's a viable idea, but that's something she's going to discuss with Deb.
So when we prepare the budget, we have to start with the executive committee today, this afternoon, we need to make sure there's monies in the budget for the executive, the staff assistant.
And I would even say bump it up a little bit, you know, because you're not going to get it for whatever you need.
And to address the, and to address the additional work and help that Scott needs would be a separate issue, which also should be budgeted. And then figure out how to staff it.
Yes.
Are there any other questions about this right now? It's kind of, I think probably all of you. Moving on to committee reports and recommendations. Miles Kimerly?
Miles Kimerly, not a lot's going on there, but a lot is going on there. We, Gosling Kubek came out, representative on, um, May 17th and we did an onsite tour that committee did, Miles Kimerly Committee did with that group or with that person anyway. And we're still waiting for his first throwback test on the master plan and whatnot. Steve, did you want to add something on that?
No, no, that, that's right on. Uh, I think it was a really good walk around, um, a lot of good input, a lot of, um, direction was given and I think it was well received and I think, uh, I think we're right where we need to be with that plan.
Great, thank you. Uh, next, Cameron and Scott did some work, groundwork on the universal access enclosure that they have at, uh.
Palmer Woods.
Stadium Palmer Woods.
Palmer Woods.
Palmer Woods, thank you.
This is the picture?
Yeah, and some pictures if everybody saw that, very nice. Price on each one of those was 20,000, was it?
14.
14 each, yeah.
14,500.
I think it's, it'll look very attractive, I like it. It's a permanent site where it's going, because it's going to have a slab and everything and that's great and there's a big wide opening so that the guy can come in and exchange the toilets and whatnot, it's very well done.
And I think the opportunity to have a kiosk or some information on it looks like, isn't that what we were originally saying?
Just got blank walls right now.
Yeah, I mean.
Two standalone kiosks separate, I would hope, but I don't know. But I think we can't do anything till we have some idea where the master plan, where we want to put them, where the, along the loop trail and blah, 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 I think. So how, how we can take some of that money I talked about earlier to get these and maybe not place them, but have them on in the pipeline, getting approved this year maybe and just not having them constructed till 24, but use 23 money, maybe we could do something like that as an idea, how to use some of that money I talked about. Anyway, any comments from, more comment, Scott?
Well, out of Palmer Woods, they also have changing room. I don't know why we'd do that, but that was kind of cool too.
Change.
But that's just, well, I really liked.
Not within this enclosure.
Yeah, within the, within the enclosure.
I'll have to go out and look at one of those things. Oh, the other thing, Scott refurbished the dugouts at Miles Kimerly and there's a picture of that that everybody saw, I hope. Excellent job, looks very good, Scott.
Did you do the painting of the dugouts yourself?
I did not paint them, I stripped them.
It looked.
Got them cleaned up.
It looked really.
Luke Buggenberg painted them.
Okay.
Okay.
Like, like the publicly thing, so get that out there.
Mark?
Luke Buggenberg.
Sounds nice. Now, the only other thing, on July 19th, we have the risk managing people coming out or whoever they are.
In July.
In July, July 19th, yeah. That's all three parks, that's, that's going to happen.
Steve's also on the dam board, one of the many has skatebreakers. They're dealing with this issue with their walkway that spans the river and because it was suggested MMR may do an assessment on some of the stuff at the dam. Is going to tie in a quick visit to the dam to look at the walkway. So we're kind of in a few minutes with what's on here.
And I do appreciate you sending out that report from 2017, I found that enlightening, but I, I couldn't tell what issues from that report were addressed and which weren't. I can't tell, but we'll find out in July. And that's all I have unless.
Maybe, maybe, Don, you could reach out to Kevin and Gosling and say, we really need, need to know the placement of the porta, porta jant and then.
Okay, yeah.
Um, we, we could meet as a committee and, and push that a little bit.
Can you send me his number? If you have, maybe I have it.
I could call him.
I bet it.
Okay, thanks, great, yeah, I'll call him.
Yeah, let's see if we can push that location and see if we can get, um, um, something to the point where we could actually go out to bids.
Okay, sounds good. Anything we can move forward, why not? And some, well, it's, it's 9:57, I'm done.
Old Settlers?
Well, we didn't have a meeting this month, but you did, you saw pictures of the chapel after the power washing, so that's the, that's the after. All the green slime has been taken off the lower part of the chapel.
Restroom.
The restroom also was power washed. Didn't look like we got to the monkey flower viewing platform.
It's not going to.
Not going to happen?
They won't touch it.
They won't touch it, okay.
Because of.
Because of the monkey flowers. I mean, we could use a straight power wash water only, but I'm not sure that would be effective either, but without, without something to loosen up all that gunk that's on there.
When somebody slips and falls, then they will.
The.
It is wet, so it's not juicy, it's really, yes.
Yeah, but when it gets wet, it's.
It gets dirty, I know.
It's not only wet, it's not only dirty, it's wet when it, when it's wet, it gets slippery.
Slimy and.
I, there was a, there was a deering tree crew parked along the road on 675, I assumed that wasn't for the park. I must have been working across the road and just parking there. So that's really it. I would hope to have a committee meeting before the, the August meeting.
I will give you an overview of a concern that happened several steps. Casey and Steve have talked about it. If you're not aware, the chapel, we have an arrangement with Len Lake or the Len Arden Club.
Len Lake.
Len Lake. And they provide upkeep of the chapel, they need, and the grounds, right near that area, and they also accept a donation for events and they kind of had this informal cooking process of the historic chapel. Someone on April 26 or 27 requested to reserve the chapel for a wedding shower as a rain spot, but they were going to hold it outside. And the very short contract says, if you're reserving this, you need a deposit, it's effective from the day we receive the money. And if you let us know 30 days in advance, we will refund your money if you don't use. And they were confused, they booked it, but then because they didn't use it, they felt they should give their deposit back. back. However, the ladies went out, they cleaned it, they aired it out. They had it set all off ahead of time. And so they're very upset they're not getting deposit because they didn't use it. However, it clearly stays in there 30 days. And it also clearly, if they're reserving it, no one else can use that chapel. So we let the ladies know, you might just have to eat this and they return it.
This was the people who were putting on the wedding?
The baby shower.
The baby shower. Yeah, I mean, it's clear they have to give them 30 days advance notice if they're not going to use it.
Thing is, they booked it exactly 30 days in advance. And then because it wasn't raining that day, they felt they should get their money back.
Is it our contract or is it their contract?
No, this is the ladies' group.
Okay.
They're a volunteer organization. I don't think they're even by the ones who, they're just a nice group of ladies. And the lady that takes care of the booking, she's in her 80s and she doesn't really read this application.
Maybe they just, they need to clarify their contract a little bit more, maybe.
It's pretty clear. It's just these people were being quite nasty.
Yeah. It stays in there 30 days in advance. You have to let us know that and they will return your money. What's the thing about the rain? What are they finding? They don't, they should get it because they didn't. Because they, they didn't use it. They reserved it in the event it did rain. Oh, okay. So they provided the deposit, but they feel that they should get it back because they didn't actually use it. Doesn't matter, nobody else would have been able to use it because they reserved it. So they're not getting it, but we told them, just don't fight it. Give it back. It's, it's kind of neat because these people, they're, they're a great group of ladies. They really take good care of the park.
So they are going to refund the money simply because that's the easiest way?
Because they made the biggest thing about it, yeah. Just to, because they threatened them.
Threatened them with legal action?
I'm not really going into it on the record, but they did.
Is there anything we can do as a, we have no.
I don't think so. I think this is a learning situation.
So maybe the lease statement at the start should be, if you don't use it, because even though you reserved it, you don't, we will return it.
They're reserving when they're wetting it.
Yeah.
But I know they have a retired attorney, his car is, he'll probably be good. Not much you can do this year.
Rework the agreement.
Well, the agreement's actually a Glen Lake Women's Club agreement. It's not even a county agreement.
No.
The agreement is between some private party and the women's club.
Correct.
And the park historically has let them do this because they take such great care of the chapel and the grounds. And it's not like they're making a ton of money off it. It just covers the expenses. They cover all the supplies to clean, you know.
I'm sure. We put a lot of flowers to cover up.
Even if it's a couple hundred, how many times does it get used in a year? Once or twice, maybe, at the nest?
Four or five at the bounce.
Really?
And that only would cover a lot of the flowers.
Right.
All right, my, my final thing for old settlers is, I mean, we do have that, the risk management group going to be out on, I thought it was April, July 17th, but maybe.
I think it's 17th.
19th, July 19th.
19th, I believe.
19th, okay. I know I got it on my calendar, right? So we're going to do that. Is Scott going to be involved with those?
He's going to.
Okay.
He'll be at all three.
All right, and we, we do, I think Casey, I and Scott need to get together to lay out where we want the parking, designated parking spaces on the internal roads.
Waiting on a call.
Waiting on a call from, from us guys? Okay, so we can make that happen before the August meeting?
Should be able to, yeah.
Okay.
Just call them. You're the originator, you're the chairman.
All right, I'll originate it. By the way, by the way.
It's rolling downhill.
I'm, I'm out of seclusion. I had to be in seclusion for the two weeks of the COVID.
Now he tells me, oh my god.
No, I checked it negative this morning. I tested negative two days ago. So I've been, I've been negative for at least the last four days. Anyway, that's, that's the old settlers.
All right. Moving on to Veronica Valley.
We have not had a meeting this month, well, since our last commission meeting. We have several things going on. John Popa's looking after the wall structure around the, the new walkway that we put in. Scott, have, have the potholes been filled? I mean, it's.
No, I haven't. The water was so high, I had to go lower, lower, lower. Clear the drain or lower the pond or work out the wall. It's a problem.
But that's all going along. Pardon me? Okay. Well.
Long chain.
But that's one of the pieces of work, yes, that's moving along. The weed situation, we, right now, we are seeing a real explosive growth of filamentous algae. And if you recall, Heather Ettinger had said to us that with the complete wipeout of vegetation that occurred two summers ago, we probably had set ourselves up for, we experienced it last year and it's going on this year, and that's an algae bloom more than, than the broadleaf weed, weeds. Algae, algaecide, Scott's found another source, but we're talking a couple hundred bucks, several hundreds of dollars for pellets that can be distributed ourselves, Scott and other volunteers. We're waiting on, we need a permit. Do we know anything about? I know Laurel, Laurel created an account for us at Eagle so that we can get the permit application process going, but.
I keep playing phone tag with the lady that's going to help me walk through the online permitting process. I call her, I wait three hours, I step away in the bathroom. I call her back, can't get her. So I'm hoping if there's one day that I can just stay at the gas and make you hook up.
Are you talking about Robin?
No, it's someone different.
It's a different person that takes care of the water and stuff?
Ms. Dee Sharbino.
Well, we will. I thought that spray, though, I thought we had a permit to take care of that algae. I thought, you know, we had one permit that we could do the ponds, and we decided not to kill all the weeds, but that we could go do the algae ourselves.
No. Yeah, we haven't had a permit. I mean, not one that's still.
They want one every year?
As far as I know.
Savin was taking care of that aspect.
Yeah.
When we had Savin, they.
He took care of the permit? Savin?
They, we always had to have a certain amount of money ahead of time, real early in the year for Savin so they could initiate the permit process. And we did that, they did it once, and then they, we had the money available last year and they didn't need to do it.
So we might have blown it for this year already. I don't know. It takes a while to get those permits.
Well, Heather indicates that because of the size of the ponds, because of the full details of our request, she thinks that that probably will go more, much more quickly once we get it in. She said the applications are reviewed very regularly, very steadily, and those that are, can require, that don't require a whole lot on their end of it, she said they're moving much more quickly. But we need the permit. We will get it and we'll begin experimenting, learning.
He's quite involved. That permit just isn't a couple of paragraphs.
Well, I, I can't get into it to find out. We have, Laurel created the account, so we now can make the application online. But a county, somebody, county personnel has to, to do some of that. Laurel's, as she said, she's waiting to learn more from, that's somebody at Eagle, to move this process along. But we'll do that. And in the meantime, the issue is the algae versus kids fishing day. So Alan Campbell has, though he hasn't returned my call the last couple of days, he, we've talked twice in the last two weeks, and he says he has a workday scheduled for the 16th, so next week with volunteers. And he's talking about the Boy Scouts. I don't know, they had some issue, the Boy Scouts needed to do it on Tuesday instead of Thursday, but he's claiming that, that that's all being worked out. I need from you, Scott, well, I don't know the date. I'll keep in touch with you because we need to get the weed razor out and the weed rake. We need to know where to dump, the filamentous algae breaks off the bottom and we now have, I haven't seen it since a week ago, Monday, but lots of mats of this stuff floating on the surface. They are not any longer attached to the bottom. They will be rakeable, easy in that sense, but we need to know where to dump it. Because that, all, all that we take out of the ponds needs to stay on that prop, on our property. So that's moving.
Across the driveway, swamp there, five.
It's just weeds. It's like a pile of grass when you're done with it.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I, I, and Alan indicates that he's got the manpower and the four wheeler to move it all over to where we dump it, what, not want it dumped, and they'll do all that. Good, okay. Double, double check with Heather about placing it in wetland. It might have to be in upland.
But Heather don't know more. I'm Scott, kidding.
If I was. Yeah, if we had, I think I'd do it with the. I'll find out. I'll find out. Yeah. Okay. Let's see. The kids fishing day, the permit application. Oh, John Walter is, I know he and his wife are in the process of moving. I know it's been a real strain on him. He will continue to work or may have the drawings done for the exact perimeter of the parking lot. So we establish a plan going into the future.
I didn't hear any of that.
I'm sorry, John. John Walter's working on the drawings for the parking lot, which will then determine where we put our, the pad for our porta potties. When John Walter has that done, the plan was Scott and I, and I think I heard you might be, that we would go out and actually stake that out from his, from his drawing.
Right, John, that was a nice meeting that we arranged and went there, met on site, we walked around. Well, that following Monday, I was supposed to meet with John and we were going to paint that gravel and where it was going to be. And at that time, let's pour the concrete here and continue it there. Well, we never met that Monday and we didn't meet Tuesday.
Well.
After then, every one of our days were busy, or mine was. And I think that once we, we spray that out and pass it by Scott, then can we combine that with pouring this pad for this other one? Because all we want is a pad and some, I think, extra concrete that would be tied to the other one. But we need to get a proposal out on that.
Well, I'm surprised you said you were going to meet that quickly because the deal was from that walk around that John was going to prepare the drawings first.
He was.
And he did get out there and do his own measurements for, for the baselines.
But that was even before our meeting, though, right?
No, he, he's gone since then. Because he said he needed to match this drawing, the dimensions, to the actual physical space out there and figure out. And, and then work up the drawing for the end of it, end of the parking there for the, the pad. The last communication I had was, from him, was about this move and that he had done the baseline measurements out there at the park, but had not sat down yet.
So he went out there on that Monday and.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
So that will continue. I know this particular, they're moving into town from where they've been, and I know it's been a strain. So I don't, I haven't heard from him about the drawings, but we'll keep on that because that will be the goal then. And I like that idea. We get both pad locations, sizes nailed down.
Well, I can draw up this RFP, but I got to meet John. It'll be a small thing. Frame this in with this and pour this and.
The flat work, I think Jerry will do it.
So all we got to do is build form and hire Jerry?
Jerry will do it all.
So, John? John Popa, then I will be checking with John Walter about the progress on drawings. And then we'll, I'll communicate and we'll get out there and get, get the layout actually done on the ground.
Is he going to do the flat work for this other one too?
If you ask him, he probably will. Loves doing that.
Our Jerry.
Our Jerry. Your Jerry.
Our Jerry will.
Loves doing concrete.
Pour concrete. Let's do it.
Good on it.
Any else there?
No.
The only thing else is Scott and I tomorrow are going to work on that pond. If you want to put it in the minutes and stuff, we're going to get some post nailed down there. And I think Alan Campbell is going to help us. I got the worst case of swimmer's itch in Lake Blom all last week, and I wonder if that pond's got swimmer's itch.
You'll find out.
This will be a test.
Let me know this weekend, however.
Oh.
I've got some cream you could borrow.
Anyway, I'm going to be in that water and these guys are going to pone. We're going to try getting that done before kids' day and then add some chips there later. We saw when we walked around how it needed improving.
Okay.
That's not in the budget.
Well, now, keep in mind with budget, we budgeted 2,500, 2,375 for seven lake services to do spray. We're not doing that. We, we will spend a couple hundred from that for the algaecide pellets, but we're going to have a little extra money left over there for use here. So I think we're doing okay because we're only talking about the pad.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add.
Any other, or any public comment? Any commissioner comments?
I, can I just say real quick? I'm going to meet tomorrow with Joe Vandermeulen at the port farm. I've been asked to kind of do a little segue for his documentary of that thing. I've worked with him before and so, yeah. If you have any amazing thoughts that you want in that video, let me know, but I'm just going to.
Joe's doing a documentary?
About the port farm. And he just needs a little segue between, you know.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'm going to supply him with that, but I'm real excited. I just am so happy to live in a county that prioritizes its past and learning from its past and preserving it. Again, thank you, Steve, for the work you do. That's all.
Anything else? Nothing from me. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
I agree. Casey, so you're married to.
Executive meeting?
Texas.
Yep. Supposed to be. So who's the executive? Well, Nolan is not my daughter. Chair Vice.